Chamber of Commerce morning, it is gorgeous outside. I think it's the first meeting in several weeks where it hasn't been raining on Tuesday mornings, so it's a great time to live in South Dakota. I'd like to start the meeting, it's a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Caroline Crager here, if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from July 16, 2019.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I read every word in those minutes.
I was gonna say, it shouldn't take an NEOS very long to read it, it was a pretty short meeting, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item is, consider a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $2,376,412.29.
Pay the bills?
I heard a motion and one that I'll consider a second, any comments?
Ma'am Chair.
Commissioner Baris.
The largest expense in there is highway, and I know that Highway 137 had considerable expenses.
It's highway construction season, so a lot of good work being done out keeping our roads in good maintenance, so any other comments? So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. There are a number of reports there for year reviews, Minnehaha County coroner report, Human Services 2019 second quarter report, the abandoned cemetery board minutes, all of which have a lot of great information in it, and the auditor's office has their monthly report for June. Good morning, Vicky, thank you.
Vicky Hewitt from the auditor's office, just with a quick overview of our June financials, starting with the general fund cash balance, sitting at $17,266,000. Again, this time of year, we start our spending down, our cash is highest in April and May, so we expect that to go down. The highway fund cash is sitting at $13,336,000. I think just some timing, I know like was mentioned, there's some spending going on in July and throughout the summer as projects are completed, so we'll likely see spend down there as well. And then on to our revenues, total revenue sitting at $29.8 million, a little over 52% of budget. The tax revenue at just over $23 million, at 53.5% of budget. And then our other revenues at $6,766,000, just under 50% of budget. And expenditures, total expenditures at $27.9 million, right at 48% of budget. The biggest portion of that, of course, with personnel at $19.2 million, just under 50%. And our other expenses at $8.6 million, 46% of budget, so sitting right where we should be for halfway through the year, so any questions?
Any questions for Vicky? Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Okay, that finishes our report, next item is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the next item, which is special commission action to approve a new position of a juvenile diversion program coordinator. Good morning.
I'm Tara Palmiato, I'm the juvenile prosecutor, deputy state's attorney. We are asking the commission to approve a new position of juvenile diversion program coordinator, pay grade 16 for the state's attorney's office, so that we can have immediate recruitment. This position is the same one that has been tentatively approved as part of the 2020 budget The juvenile diversion program coordinator is responsible for assessing program participant needs, developing an individualized diversion plan. This position refers the program participants to appropriate agencies and programming, manages diversion plans, follows through with referrals, to determine whether the clients have met programming goals or needs to have their case reverted back to the state's attorney's office for potential charges. The effect of this program is to keep youth and families out of the court system. Upon hire, the diversion coordinator will have access to programming available through the community partners, such as functional family therapy, aggression replacement therapy, moral recognition therapy, mental health and substance abuse services. At this point, this position is located within Lutheran Social Services. The initial plan was to have that program start with Lutheran Social Services and then transition to the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office. And LSS has wanted to further this transition and believe, as we do, that the program would be best served under the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office. The position is currently co-funded with grant funds, as well as with county funds, reimbursement funds for a successful diversion. The anticipated 2009 cost for the position, including salary and benefits, would be $62,879. And the annualized cost for 2020 would be $67,425,000. The grant funding and county reimbursement would be available to fund the position in the near future. Thank you.
Are there any questions, comments?
I was just gonna kind of reiterate what Tara said, and that was that the CGS gives a grant funding amount of about $29,000, and that some of the reimbursement we've gotten through the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act, I believe last year was just close to $50,000, and so this position basically is funded by reimbursements from different grant programs provided by the state.
Just a quick question, I certainly support the hiring of this individual, and I think it's a great program, but I'm wondering if you keep track of the individuals who are diverted by this program, if you see them coming back through the program at any later point?
We do keep track of the individuals, and we have had a very good rate, we are able to determine if there is recidivism, and we've had a very good percentage that don't end up in the court system.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you for coming this morning. Next item are abatements, there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So this brings us to our opportunity for public comment, is there anyone here who would like to comment about something that's not on the agenda this morning? Let's see, anybody rushing to the podium? So that takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing and second reading on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minnehaha County rezoning, number 19-006, Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, planning director. This morning is the second reading and possible adoption of a rezoning request, 1906. This is to rezone approximately about an acre at what we would call Renner Corner, so it's north of Sioux Falls, about three and a half miles. The applicant is requesting to rezone some property that's behind and next to some existing commercial property, so basically they're expanding the commercial area in that Renner Corner area. This has gone before the planning commission, on June 24th, we had a public hearing, the planning commission recommended unanimously to approve the rezoning request, and I've included the minutes for your review, and let me show you here on the screen here where the property is located. So, at the intersection is what we would call Renner Corner, and you can see the existing commercial building, and they are just sort of rezoning to the north of that, about one acre. So I would be glad to answer any questions, this has been published for a public hearing, and I know the applicants are here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Any questions? Okay, I don't see any, so I know the applicant is here, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Okay, is there anyone here opposed to this item? All right, looks like we're to a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call vote please.
Sorry, Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so that takes us to item 11, is to authorize the chairperson to sign Minnehaha County jail bedding and clothing contracts with Phoenix Supply, Bob Barker Inc., and Victory Supply. Jeff Gromer, good morning.
Good morning, how are you doing, Jeff Gromer, I'm the chief deputy at the sheriff's office. I'm just requesting that the commission sign these contracts that we've been through the bid process and the bid approval process with Phoenix Supply for some of the blankets, mattress covers, and cleaning rags we needed at the jail. Bob Barker also has a contract submitted for socks and laundry bags, and then Victory Supply was awarded the bids for a long list of the various inmate supplies, I'm not gonna read through all those unless you'd like me to, but the contracts for, I think Olivia has the contracts, and just requesting those be signed. It's a two-year contract for supplying the jail on an ongoing basis.
Any questions?
I'm not gonna say anything.
Commissioner Benega's biting his tongue, he's very amused that Bob Barker is supplying items for the jail.
And has for a long time.
All right, if there are any questions, I guess I'd entertain a bid, or a bid, I'd entertain a motion to approve all three contracts.
Moved, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Oh, no, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
The price was right.
I knew you were just down there, just waiting. Okay, so that takes us to item 12, where we're gonna have a briefing on the GovTech online tax payment system. Carol's gonna get us kicked off here this morning.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office, sometimes you guys move faster than I thought we were all gonna move. Anyway, yes, today joining us is Tracy Williams and Mark Carr from GovTech Services, and this is a program, a software program, that is used in many, many states, many, many counties for payment of property taxes online. So I'm gonna introduce them, and let them go ahead and get started, and it looks like Tracy Williams is up.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, thank you very much for the time today. I am Tracy Williams, I'm with GovTech Services. Also with us today is our company founder and president, CEO, Mark Carr, and then Terry Caness, who's in sales and support also. So basically, our company is a company based in Iowa with the mission to simplify the tax collection process for everyone involved, that includes the tax collector, the treasurer, the taxpayer, citizen, or the financial institutions as well. And we currently work with about 360 agencies in 17 different states. This is just a little bit of background about our company, we work with about nine counties here in South Dakota already, we have excellent relationships with many banks, and the big escrow companies, I don't know, CoreLogic is, if you're not familiar with them, they're one of the largest taxpayers in the country, and basically how they work is they, a lot of banks, smaller banks, medium banks, and even larger banks farm out their escrow payments to CoreLogic, so I think we were talking yesterday, and in Minnehaha as an example, they do the escrow payments for about 66 banks, which is pretty standard, and we have a really good relationship with them. So a little bit about, that's Mark, he wants me to take that picture off, but, so, as you can see, we, these are the states that we are currently in with the 360 agencies. The one thing that I'm, I'm a sales guy, I admit it, I don't hide from it, one of the things that's very exciting to me is that we have a 100% agency retention rate, so in the 10-plus years that we've been in existence, well, almost 10 years, I apologize, that we've been in existence, we've never had a county or an agency that has implemented our program and then stopped using us. And that says a lot about the quality of our program, but it also says a lot about the quality of our support. So what exactly do we do? Basically, right now, we work with those big escrow companies that will submit huge payments, and sometimes what happens is a homeowner may have an escrow, and they will get their tax bill, so they'll come in and pay it, and then the escrow company will come and pay it, and so then they have to deal with a refund, and it takes a lot of time to send out those refund checks to deal with that, who paid it, where does it go back to, we've gotta send the refund back, and so basically our process eliminates most of those refunds, almost all of them. And as an example, in Jefferson County, Kentucky, we worked with them just in the last year, we eliminated about $460,000 worth of overpayments, so their staff did not have to take any time to work on those refunds at all, which typically in the past took them hundreds of hours, according to the sheriff's office, to refund those payments, because it's such a tedious process. There is a, the best part, and I can't believe I left this out, the best part is, in most cases, the only time, well, there is no charge to the county, so there's no cost to the county to use our services, it's all user-based, user fees, so in this example, the escrow companies, such as CoreLogic, Wells Fargo, other big, large escrow companies, they basically pay for it, because it saves them time too, because they don't have to deal with those refunds, so it really is a win-win situation. So that's a little bit about the escrow process. We also have a portfolio process, which is for smaller and more regional banks and financial institutions who want to pay parcels up to 2,500 parcels in one payment, and it's a file-based process, and it's become very popular with banks, we have about 800 banks that are currently using that, and that started, and I have some data to show kind of how these services have grown, but the fee for that is 75 cents per parcel, but we have actually done testing where it actually saved the banks time because of the hourly wage, the time it takes to write up those checks, put it in an envelope, the check that they actually send, and then the cost of the envelope, and by the time they get done, it's actually more inexpensive to use the portfolio, so, and then the other thing we do is citizens' pay, which allows citizens to go online and make their property tax payments with either credit card or e-check. As I understand it right now, in Minnehaha County, if someone wants to pay their property taxes with a credit card, they have to call in, and then the staff has to enter the credit card number into the computer or into the system. With our system, that is eliminated, so they wouldn't have to deal with those phone calls, the taxpayer can sit at home, go online, enter their credit card information and pay the tax, or use their bank account. Currently, there's, I think the rate for credit cards here is 2.49% to use your credit card, we would offer a rate of 2.35%, so there is a savings there to the taxpayers, and then we also have an ACH fee of about, of $2, but that's for an unlimited number of parcels, so as I understand it, right now, when someone wants to pay their taxes online using their bank number, they have to do it just one parcel at a time, isn't that correct? So with our system, someone could actually load up to 35, 40, 100 parcels, and just have that $2 fee to pay for all those parcels, a huge time savings. So that's a little bit about the services. Our services really do eliminate a ton of phone calls, a ton of time for the staff, because again, it eliminates all those refunds, all those phone calls, and allows citizens to really take control, so again, makes it more convenient to them. The other thing we offer, and we didn't spend a lot of time, we actually had some conversations yesterday with staff, we also offer homeowners escrow, which basically allows users to set up recurring monthly or payments where they can just have their taxes taken out on a monthly basis, and do that, so that's our, do you have anything to add on that, Mark?
No, there's several formats.
Yeah, I think you'll need to come to the mic, sorry.
This is a program that we started in Iowa about four years ago, and it's really started to take, you know, take wings, there's, the customers are able to set up monthly, weekly, bimonthly, or semi-annual automatic payments, where the system will just create an ACH automatically on the days that they select. It will also give them, send them an email three days prior to every debit to their account, and give them an opportunity to cancel if they, if, you know, if something comes up during the month that they can't make that payment, so it's been a really good tool to help people out, keep them, prevent them from going into delinquency, and ultimately in Iowa tax sales, so really excited about the product.
Thank you.
So here, as you can see, are the counties that we currently work with in South Dakota. Brookings, or excuse me, Yankton and Union have been with us a long time, they've been with us the longest. Hughes County just signed up a couple weeks ago, and we actually have a demonstration scheduled for several other South Dakota counties coming up this week, but the feedback from all of those counties has been very, very popular, has been very good, and in fact, I'll show some of that a little bit later. One of the things, one of the concerns that I know that some agencies have when we start talking about counties, those counties are obviously a little smaller than, or a lot smaller in most cases than Minnehaha, so just to kind of give you an idea, again, we work with agencies of all sizes. One of our largest agencies is Marion County, Indiana, which is Indianapolis, Jefferson County, Kentucky, which is about 770,000 people, which is Louisville, and then we put together kind of a block of counties that are of similar size to Minnehaha, which is Champaign County, Illinois, Hall County, Georgia, Tippecanoe County, Indiana, McLean County, Illinois, and again, the feedback from them, the time savings that they have had with us, most of the times when an agency signs up, what we hear after they go through the first cycle is, I wish we would have done this sooner, because the amount of time it saves, and the amount of phone calls it reduces from, not only the customers, but the escrow companies who are always making phone calls because they have questions about their bill, or about the property, a parcel. As an example, we work with Marshall County, South Dakota, which is a very, very small county, they have two people, full-time staff in their treasurer's office. The reason that they love our system is because they don't get phone calls anymore, because they just didn't have the time to deal with all the phone calls from the escrow companies, they just, in the first year they started, they just said, go to GovTech's portal, you can look it up there, and now they don't get those phone calls, so those two people during that time, they can spend, during the high property tax time, they can spend their time dealing in other customer service issues. One of the other concerns we hear sometimes is, okay, we don't have fees for those services now, we don't know if people will use them for services. First thing I would say is, taxpayers can do, can continue to use the way that they're doing things now, if they don't want to pay for the services. No one forces them to use the portfolio or the escrow pro service. CoreLogic, Wells Fargo, Loretta, the big, huge escrow companies, I guarantee you, if you begin to offer escrow pro, they will use the service. Every county we go into, they jump on board because it's familiar to them, they know the product, they can look things up in multiple counties, they will use the product. Escrow, or excuse me, portfolio, if banks do not want to use it, they don't have to. The banks that do want to use it, can, and we offer the first time, first cycle we go through, we offer it to them for free, so they can see what, how it works, to get an idea of the time savings that they'll have, and in many cases, banks will then continue on because they did see, they did realize the time savings. So here are just a couple of snapshots of counties that are similar in size, this is Champaign County, Illinois, as you can see, they started in 2016, just the growth in the escrow, the portfolio, and the citizens' pay, so in 2016, there were 3,649 parcels paid for by our citizens' pay, that's gone up roughly 8% since then to 3,940, so again, it continues to grow. The portfolio started with zero the first year, 768 parcels were paid the following year, and now about 1,800 are projected in 2019 based on the first cycle, so what we have found is that people are willing to pay a small fee for convenience and the time savings. Pardon me. Tippecanoe County, Indiana, same story, escrow started out with about 21,000 parcels, it's now grown up to about 7.5, or grown 7.5% to about 45,000 parcels are being paid. The portfolio started with about 1,000, now we estimate, based on the first cycle, there are two-cycle process, or two installment process, about 6,500 payments will be made through the portfolio, so again, banks are using it and they're seeing the time savings. And McLean County, same thing, I know you guys have this in front of you, so you can look at the numbers to see, but the numbers, the historical data that we have with these counties that are similar in size, show that they do, that the people are going to use it. The next thing is, this is just, just to kind of show some of the feedback that we get from our agencies, and you can see the three, there are three at the bottom testimonials from counties actually in South Dakota about their feedback, and the one that I would really point out is Myron Hurdle in Union County, again, much smaller than Minnehaha, but just to give you an idea, he tells us all the time that what used to take him two days to process a CoreLogic payment, because of all the different moving parts and the refunds, and how many parcels, and how many different banks, now it takes him about 10 minutes after using our service, so for that other day and a half, he's able again to have him and his team focus on other customer service things that they can spend more time on. Patty Vavre in Yankton County, I just saw her at the Sudeco conference in May, she said if a treasurer goes through the cycle, they'll never want to go back. So that's the kind of feedback we get from our agencies. I mentioned CoreLogic, this was an email, a couple of emails that were sent to the treasurer's office, they actually prompted us to do our first demonstration for the treasurer's office, and I just highlighted a couple of things, this is Jeremy Kinkler, who's the CoreLogic representative who covers South Dakota, and basically, he really recommends that the counties use us, because it does save everyone time, because they're just on to the number of refunds. And then this is a bank that, it's kind of a funny story, and I'll just kind of read through it real quick, but they were adamantly opposed to, when they first, they're in Dubuque County, they were adamantly opposed to paying the portfolio fees, they didn't want to, 75 cents, oh my gosh, that's crazy. The county essentially told them they had to, because in Iowa, you can charge up to $2, is that $2 a parcel for administrative fee, so they said either use the 75 cents or do the $2, and after they went through the first cycle, now they're one of our testimonials for banks, they found it to be that helpful. So, you know, again, the phone calls that are saved, the time, it's really remarkable, and there are no costs. The other thing I would mention is, our support team, basically once, if this is implemented in a county, our support team basically becomes the support team for the payments, so if a taxpayer or a user in your county has a question, they don't have to call the treasurer's office, they can call our support team to ask, okay, I don't understand how to make this payment, I don't understand this, I don't, they can call our support team, and our support team will handle that question, so again, alleviating some of that time from your treasurer's staff. So that's really our presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Benega?
Tracy, just a quick question, how good is the accuracy of the data entry that goes in, do you track that, when people use it for the first time, do they come back with significant error-related issues, or in your issuing refunds, or whatever, or do you not track that?
Well, and Mark, if you want to come up, but I would say that one of the great things about, because our platform was designed by a former treasurer, there are a lot of steps that people that are in the process to make it so they can't make those mistakes. As an example, one thing we discussed yesterday is, you can't copy and paste your bank account number, it just, it won't allow you to do that, and then sometimes if you, if there are other things that happen, you'll get a notification right then. right then that you made an error. I can't think of all those situations, but the system is, we try to make it as error-proof as possible to save that time. And again, because Mark and Terry, Terry Caness, who works with us as a former treasurer, they've been on that side of the counter, and any error adds time, and what we're trying to do is take away those errors. So I don't, I don't, do you know, are there statistics on?
Yeah, we have never tracked that, but the data comes directly from the county's system. And we work with Tyler Technologies, which is your vendor, very closely in, I think, every one of our states. I think they're probably, I would guess they're, I'm sure they're our largest vendor that we work with. So they have it, have it down pretty, pretty well. And we've, to my knowledge, we've never had, you know, an incorrect amount paid because Tyler's just, you know, they just submit good data to us, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Kersky.
Couple of questions. One, you kind of mentioned or alluded to your backroom support, you know, what are the hours, you know, what type of staffing is that? Is that a, so if somebody wants to pay their bill at nine o'clock at night or whatever, what?
It's a very quick turnaround.
Phone support is from seven, seven in the morning to seven at night. Email support is pretty much around the clock. I mean, you know, we all, you know, have mobile phones and we do a lot of our support after hours on our phones. And so chances are, unless it's, you know, some, you know, midnight or after, that they're going to get a prompt response probably within an hour or so.
Okay. And how about the interface with our IT? I mean, what are we looking at for staff time and that type of thing from our side to make our system work with your system?
I should probably introduce myself, Monty Wadambak with Minnehaha County IT. So Minnehaha County already exports the data that's needed for our existing website. So my understanding is GovTech would need that exact same set of data. So no additional steps from us, we would just be providing that file to them, and then they would take that data represented in their website, you know, as far as the parcels that owe taxes, how much they owe the taxpayer and that kind of stuff. And then when payments come in, those payments would be downloaded from GovTech's website just like they are from Security Labs today, and then that information is then uploaded into the Ncode system. So the process as IT sees it is very similar. I think there will be some efficiencies because GovTech does some non-sufficient funds checks for banks that participate in that and some of those kind of things. So I think there would be fewer errors that would, would come in, but very similar.
Thank you.
Monty, as long as you're up there, and since there's no one here from the treasurer's office this morning, I'm just wondering, I know there was a meeting late yesterday afternoon with some end-users and banks and property owners here in Minnehaha County. Can you just give a little bit of a flavor of how that meeting went and what you learned?
Sure. Yeah. So we had GovTech come in yesterday afternoon and kind of give a deeper dive demonstration. And we had some property taxpayers, larger property taxpayers, a bank, property management company. And, you know, I think that the bank that was there and representative, they were supportive of paying the 75 cents per parcel just to simplify and streamline the process, speed it up, add, you know, to make sure that it's accurate. So for them, that fee wasn't, wasn't a concern, it just improves their process and makes them more efficient. Then we had a couple of other, another large property taxpayer, I think, you know, was pretty positive of how the solution works and, you know, they kind of expressed the concerns they have with the existing system. And then we had one property management system where I think their struggle was when they make payments to a bunch of LLCs, they were concerned about that $2 fee for all of the different, all of the different bank accounts that they're going to have to pay out of. So for them, they may continue to do, you know, their payments via mail. You know, that certainly is still an acceptable way to do it. So anybody that wants to still come to the treasurer's office for some reason or another, or anybody that wants to make their payments via mail, would still be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Benega?
Monty, do you know how many companies that, or counties that Tyler works with, with the treasurer's office software?
In the state of South Dakota?
No, in the state of South Dakota, but in the entire region that they're covering.
I do not. So I think that this group might have actually better information on that. I believe I heard someone say that Tyler has property tax solutions in 44 Iowa counties. Does that sound right? I believe it was, give or take 44 Iowa counties. So they have a very large presence in Iowa. South Dakota is probably closer to, you know, 15 or 20 counties, something along that line.
Majority of Wyoming counties.
Okay. Majority of Wyoming counties evidently.
I guess I'm looking for some insurance, so to speak, on the backup systems that we're not putting all our marbles in one basket and somebody is unable to support it, but obviously, that's not the issue with Tyler.
Yeah. You know, as far as Tyler goes, you know, they're, the company itself is very large, growing, and they are continuing to evolve their product. And we met with them just last week about their next version of their solution that they're going to be rolling out to South Dakota within the next couple of years.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, thank you. Commissioner Heiberg and I were able to come, I had to leave a little bit early yesterday to the meeting, and it was very instructive. The treasurer's office representatives were there to give them an opportunity to interact and learn more about it. And it was very interesting to hear the different end-users. The financial institution had experience with this product over in Iowa and had generally good things to say.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't mention that, but the bank that was representative yesterday is using GovTech in some of their Iowa counties where they have mortgages. And so for them, they were familiar with it, and, you know, we're certainly looking forward to that being an option for them moving forward in Minnehaha County.
All right. Anything else? Well, that was just a briefing this morning so we could get some familiarity with the product, and we really appreciate you guys coming, and I'm sure there'll be more conversations about this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 13, which is a briefing on the 2020 provisional budget. Carol?
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes. Before you is a briefing on the provisional budget for 2020. Next Tuesday, you will be asked to approve a provisional budget. You've gone through a lot of hearings, a lot of discussion in order to get to this particular point. The total budget at this point stands at $92,118,340. This includes $64 million in general funds, which is always the area that has the most discussion about, as that's generated highly through the property tax dollars. The one thing I want to, we would like to get some input from you today on, is the amount that you'd like us to put in for opt-out for next week. When we finished our last budget hearing, we were at $1.9 million estimated at, which was the shortfall, that we would look at covering through opt-out for this year. We've updated the numbers. The auditor's office has done a great job going through and updating, getting payroll, looking at all the changes that are out there. That number is now $1.78 million. So we would look from some direction for you for the provisional budget, not a final budget, from a provisional budget as to what number you would like to have us insert. You could put it somewhere in between or give us a different number also. Just as a reminder, at the bottom of your screen, I did put in the reference for dates because I do want to remind you that you have the opportunity to continue to adjust that number before the budgets are final and levies are set. Again, this is just a provisional budget. So any questions as we look to you guys for direction?
Comments, questions?
Yes, my personal thoughts, and we'll, you know, have a final vote on this next week, but is that since we have an opportunity to continue to adjust numbers, I mean, we got good news today. I always like when we, when the amount of opt-out looks like it's going down, but I don't know why we would need to change it now and will likely need to change it again when we do a final budget. But I really appreciate the work that the auditor's office does constantly, keeping us with good numbers, and Carol and the Commission Office as well, and we'll have an opportunity to vote on this next week. All right, thank you.
Okay, we will leave it as is then for the 1.9, for provisional.
Okay, so the next item is item 14. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign two JLG architect amendments for the jail expansion laundry room and the courtroom. Carol?
Correct. Yes, I think everybody knows we're building a jail in our county at this point. We are pleased that the fifth floor expansion, vertical expansion, we've taken over, and we'll be seeing, probably moving in inmates in the next month to do that because they're getting the beds and all the stuff that needs to go with it in there. The new facility will have a new laundry area and also a judicial courtroom located within it. The laundry room, we are asking for an amendment to JLG Architects for $3,206 because I believe it was like a switch from vertical to, from, instead of east-west to north-south or something like that is what that change I believe was that you guys were doing. So a small change that was out there. These actually are First Amendment changes to the contract for the architect, so we've gone a whole year without any. The other one is the judicial courtroom. When we designed this and you approved the GMP, the courtroom shell was there, and we hoped that as dollars continued to not be utilized in the contingency, that we could make some of those dollars available for finishing out that courtroom. And we are comfortable at this point that we're well on our way financially with this project and can redirect dollars towards that. And that is for $19,000 is the dollar amount, a little over $19,000.
Questions for Carol?
I mean, I think these are both, I mean, I think it is great news that we've had no amendments to our architect's contract up till now, and the ability to finish out a courtroom over there is going to be tremendous efficiencies for jail staff. And we appreciate the judges and judicial system being open to bringing personnel over for that, but it will be, I just think it's a great opportunity and it's going to help with some of the, as the court system continues to grow and they're having space issues too, this provides another option, so.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to sign the two JLG architectural amendments for the jail and laundry and courtroom.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item 15. Consider a motion to approve two proposed resolutions for submission to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners for legislative action. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Even though the 2019 legislative session wrapped up just a few months ago, planning is already in place for the 2020 legislative session. And as in previous years, our state association, or rather, your state association, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, puts together a legislative platform at their annual conference each year in September. Starting in 2017, collaborative efforts started to take place between local government entities, including Minnehaha County, the city of Sioux Falls, and other surrounding municipalities in an effort to really identify the common ground that each unit of government shared as far as priorities that were in common. And we found in visiting with different legislators from the local area and others for that matter, while in peer, they were impressed by the level of increased communication cooperation that was taking place at the local government entity. So this is the third year that the process has taken place. This year, the list of changed resolutions is shorter than has been in past years. So the first one that we'll be taking a look at is the development of triage centers. And really, I think what the different governmental entities were seeking is that there's been discussion about some changes that would be needed in statute to bring forth the triage center and make it operational. And really, the consensus was that it would be helpful if regulatory barriers that do exist in statute in a few different areas be removed. And so this legislation, or rather, this resolution, the language is a little more broad, and the reason why is because some of the specific language is still being worked on by planning. But I believe this resolution would address it, so really, it would apply to all South Dakota counties. And as we know, with triage centers, there are co-occurring disorders that people have with mental health, as well as maybe some other detoxification or substance abuse issues that are happening. And the triage center is really a much more appropriate place for individuals to get connected with community resources rather than going to a hospital emergency department where they are not simply equipped with staff or resources to handle that. And so the triage center would really be the place for a warm handoff to a private organization that exists within the community. So this first resolution is dealing with, again, supporting the development of triage centers by eliminating regulatory barriers. I don't know if you would like to take action on this first and then move on to the second resolution, or if you'd like me to go on to the second resolution.
I think they're related.
Excuse me?
They're related.
Yeah, I think you can go on. Thank you.
All right, you are welcome. So the second one is very, very similar to a resolution that you have previously approved regarding additional funding for mental health, drug, and alcohol education intervention and treatment programs. And really, the only change with this resolution in the past is adding the phrase "mental health" as the previous resolution suggested. Mental health disorders and treatment really is very much intertwined in terms of helping provide individuals with services needed to help get their lives back to be more full and productive and happy for everyone. So the phrase "mental health" was added to the language for this resolution, otherwise all the other verbiage is similar.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Commissioner Kersky.
Just a comment, I guess. You know, a lot of our agenda today was talking about jail and juvenile diversion coordinators and triage and mental health and how everything's so related. You know, we're building a new jail and our goal is to not fill it up. I mean, truly, that's what we're trying not to do. We want to put the people in jail that, as Judge Pecus told me when I first started this job, is put people in jail that scare you, not that make you mad. You know, and the work I've been doing with the triage for the last three years, a very small percentage of our general population has mental health issues, but a very large percentage of our jail population has mental health issues. So getting people the help they need, diverting people from jail. Jail is expensive. It's expensive to us as a county. So spending $40 million to build a jail and then it's cheap compared to staffing it and keeping the people in there. So just, I'm glad to see that we're doing this resolution. It makes so much sense. There are some issues statutorily that to make the triage run more smoothly, this will help and just to make the awareness that, with our legislators, just all steps in the right direction. So again, keep the people out of the jail, just the ones that really should be there, getting them in there, and the ones that need help, let's get them help.
Anything else? Commissioner Barth?
You know, it seems a little bit broad to say you want to eliminate regulations, but there are none listed. I mean, what regulations prevent treating people with mental illness or alcohol problems? Is there stuff in law that says you can't do it?
I could probably give you an example. If an ambulance picks somebody up that, you know, is called in law enforcement, whatever, they're directed that they have to take them to a certain type of facility. The triage might not qualify for that, but they should be able to go to the triage. So it just eliminates some of those barriers to effectively operating a triage center and working with law enforcement.
I appreciate that specificity. I appreciate that specificity. I'd like to see more of that.
Commissioner Heiburger?
We intentionally did not make it specific, Jeff, because there are a lot of things and we don't want to put barriers right off the bat by putting something in here because we want to be able to have the latitude to come forward and say these are some of the things and not limited by the resolution that we're bringing forward. So that was actually a topic of discussion.
If I may, Madam Chair. I just have been watching things deteriorate locally. You know, where the fellow managing the Bishop Dudley House has resigned and left, whereas both Union Gospel and the Bishop Dudley House are no longer letting you stay for more than 120 days lifetime. And now hundreds of people that have stayed there past that limit are no longer allowed there to use the facilities, do their laundry, take a shower. So they're out on the street and it's getting, things are getting worse, fast. Bishop Dudley House was certainly a breath of fresh air when it happened five years ago or so. But things are going downhill right now on the streets, in my opinion.
There's certainly a lot of challenges and they're all very intertwined and complicated. Craig, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just before you decide to take any action on this, the process moving forward regarding the resolutions is should you approve both of these resolutions today? They will be forwarded on to the state association and then they will be considered for adoption in the state legislative platform at the annual conference in September.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd consider a motion.
I'll make a motion. A second. Deans?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning?
Sure.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, last night we had our planning and zoning commission meeting and it was one of the shortest ones I can remember, only an hour or so. But one issue that came up, a fellow wants to put in a business east of Sioux Falls over at that corner, I call it gun club corner, Highway 42 and 115 east almost to the Odie Dairy area. Anyway, it's in the joint area of control. And the city is asking him to get it planted before they will approve it. And that planting will cost $30,000. And that's so that they can put sewer and water and curb and gutter and all that out there. But the city doesn't plan to be there until 24 or later. And in the meantime, he's going to have to pay to put in rural water, have a septic system and all this kind of stuff. $30,000 is a good chunk. It's kind of discouraging. And I just wanted to point that out. On a second issue, I was at the East Dakota Water Development District meeting. And, you know, as usual, we're often talking about nitrates in the water. And the cheese plant up in Lake Norden has had a couple of huge discharges of nitrates. And we're lucky in the sense that with the floodwaters that it's somewhat diluted. But we'll see what happens. They need to improve their treatment. Also up in that area, they just had a truck go off the road and dump its load into the water. And it was a load of dicambras and roundup, which is again dissipated and hopefully gone. But our water is really important and that nitrate stuff, when in Iowa, the city of Des Moines sued all the counties north for allowing too much nitrate into the river, which they get their drinking water from because it's very difficult to remove once it's in the river. Anyway, that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just going to report on, last week, Commissioner Ben, or Commissioner Karski and myself and Craig Dewey attended the NACO convention. I did give the three guys, the three commissioners that were not there, I gave, put on your desk each the annual report so you could take a look at what's going on. I'm just going to give, I'm going to give you my report. So the first Friday that I was there was a safety and justice meetings that I attend. I sit on the national board for that as a committee member. We had 16 resolutions. 15 of them were supported and one was withdrawn. And almost all of those resolutions coming out of the association dealt with FEMA funding. If you're interested in them, I will give you a copy of them. I thought, I'm not going to read 15 of them to you because it would take too much time. I went, one of the things that we had in our committee meetings was a presentation on preparedness, response, and recovery for mass casualty events. And they talked about lessons that they learned and they gave excellent directions on dealing with large injury events. I did talk to emergency management this morning, just told them I would pass on to him some of the notes that I had taken from that presentation. Attended the Rural Action Caucus and they talked about the success of tested. If you remember, I brought back from Washington DC last March, the test which was to test broadband in our area and I asked you all to put the app on your phone and they want you to continue to keep doing it. They have been able to collect more data than they ever anticipated. It has actually gone, lots of people have added it to their phone and they have gotten some excellent data on how much broadband we have. And because of the work that's being done already, Senator Thune is a prime sponsor for a Broadband Data Improvement Act of 2019. It's called DAT, D-A-T-A, which will help to support more broadband. And the goal, part of the goal of this legislation was to, for, to require the FCC to provide more accurate information on who actually has broadband and what is availability because they're finding that FCC will say there's great broadband availability in this and it'll be one household in a county or one household in an area that will have it and no one else will have a decent broadband. So that has had broad support in the legislature from both sides. Erin Surska gave a presentation on the data piece at a Data Driven Strategies workshop. She did an excellent job about relaying how Minnehaha County has made progress with our triage center by relying on data and using the data to support our decisions. I went on another seminar that was called Reducing Criminal Justice Fines and Fees in Nashville. They have done a lot of work because they're finding that there's such an inequality of who can afford to pay the fees that are coming out of court systems and trying to make them more equitable. And they've adopted quite a few different avenues of how to reduce fees. One of the things that they did is they reduced their expungement fees from $450 to $100. And that has, they figured out different ways to make up the difference in revenue. But they said, actually, the bottom line is what are we doing to help our people to succeed? And if you're throwing them back in jail because they can't pay a fee and the county's paying $95 a day to put them in jail, have we made any progress? They gave us a list of different things that they have done to help to reduce the fees and make them more equitable. I went to another session that was called Solution Session and Justice for All, Leveraging Technology to Break Down Barriers in the Justice System. In Clark County, Nevada, they're using a platform created by Tyler Technology that works with online dispute resolution. And a person who is working through a custody case or a small claims court could go on their, on their phone app or on their computer and they could do their, their work on their, just their, what do I want to say there? The resolution that would help to bring it to conclusion. And they found that, so that when they come to court, it frees up court time. And they found that 100% of their, of the cases have been resolved through, that they have, that have gone online and done this have been resolved through this app or through this program. I'm given a bad explanation of how to do this, but they are a Tyler Technology program. And since we do have Tyler Technology, I thought we could dig further into this. It saves a lot of court time because these people come to court already have prepared a lot of the paperwork that would have had to been done. Most of the sessions, I gave you the names of some of, most of the sessions will be available on the online NACO website. So you can go on there. Some of them are audio, some of them are audiovisual. There are some really good seminars out there. And then Dean and Craig and I also talked with a group that I had met with called Pay It. And they are similar to what GovTech does, but they go quite a bit farther than that. You can also pay fines and fees through the court system through it. It's an online app. You could make a payment. If you didn't want to put it all on your bank, you could put it on your bank, your credit card and your debit card. You could split up payments. It's got a support system that's available 24/7. We probably spent about 25 minutes or 20 minutes talking to them and just trying to get some more information. It's also something that could be used in conjunction with the city if they want, if we wanted to partner together with them. You could pay your water bill on the app on your phone and same thing. You could split it up through different payment systems. It comes with reminders and a lot of different things. So I just ask staff to look into and see if it's, I mean, it offers a lot of different avenues if it's something else we want to look at. And it was also free to the counties, just the same as GovTech. Then I'm going to give one more. And that was that this week we had the MacArthur Grant Justice and Safety Committee meeting and just got a few updates of what was going on. The text messaging court reminders is nearly ready to start. We're closer to the pre-trial voice check-ins. The pre-trial staff is starting to get pre-sentence packets out to the accused people before they come to court. And then those people can get their, all their paperwork done and it's given to the judge when they get there. And they said that has been a huge help in speeding up the process. The felony judges have, judges have been provided with a dashboard that gives them information on their caseloads. And they can see which cases are lagging, which cases are moving forward. And they're still working out a few of the bugs on it, but the felony judges already have said it has been a huge help to them to know what's going on in their caseload. The courts have also implemented a jail management team. That team meets bi-weekly to review cases and see what do we need to move forward on these cases. They're also working on a differential case plan, which will help to move all cases more effectively through the court system. We talked about community engagement and did an overview on that. The Sioux Falls PD reported on a program that they had that's called Community Ambassador Engagement. And where they're going out and working with different small groups in the area of Sioux Falls, building relationships. Part of the MacArthur grant that we qualified for focuses on ethnic and racial disparities and community engagement. So we have, as part of the grant, we have Nexus coming in. And they talked to us yesterday about how they can assist us in the community engagement part that's required under the grant. So that's my report, I think.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Anything else? I would just add that Commissioner Heiburger and I both attended Farms After Five last Wednesday, which was fascinating. We got a tour of the Central Farmers Cooperative and we're hosted by a farm family. We were able to see their operations. And that's something that South Dakota Farm Families put on. It was open to the public. And so it was, it's just a great opportunity to get out and see what our producers are up against in this difficult time period for egg producers and see what kinds of different operations there are out there. It was a very warm evening. And so we appreciated the bus with the air conditioning, but it was, it was really fascinating. And I learned a lot personally. Any other liaison reports? New business? Any new business? Any old business? All right, I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission.
So moved? Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will try to reconvene about 10 after, quarter after. Thank you.